But I was just sharing before you guys walked in that, oh. Do we have a forum?
We do, so hold on. I just turned off the mics or turned my.
Well, I'm from mute, so I didn't forget. We'll go hit the big way.
The time is two o'clock and we do have a forum. We're gonna call this meeting to order and I will start by my introduction. Ani Nanduwe Magunandu.
Right, they've got a real meeting now. See you later. Talk to you later.
Okay, with that being said, we are gonna call the meeting to order. And I am going to ask the things. Nina's not here today, so Vice Chair Jordan, could you please call them? Quarter, our board member, Ropao?
Call Jara.
Omandeah.
Kiaseli. Uncle Bear. August, Jara, three, Tom, there's two left.
Omandeah.
Kibich. Okay, we're gonna move on to item two B. Is there any guests here today that I would like to see? Buju Angie, welcome to the school. Today, we, you are welcome to say what you need to say.
So, to begin with. Yesterday morning, my granddaughter was adopted. She was pretty upset and her mom had some important meetings that she couldn't. You know, you know how I'm supposed to do this? I just want to scream and stuff. She got out of my house. She was really, really upset. I mean, crying the face off, dad. I thought, well, everything I'll figure something out before, you know. My sister kind of come around. I think I have her with me, with me, with me. And, um. Her mom, I asked her, you know, if it's working, if I know what's going on, because I don't want someone to. All right, so right in. Got yourself a seat, calm you down. Then, but I asked her, you know, stay on the, you know, start telling you, you know, start crying. And, you know, they both calm down, you know, okay. And, you know, she wants her body right now, wants her body waiting, you know. And after a minute, he jumps up, he's kind of hankering, running to asking him, bombarding myself, you know. He's like, you can have it now. I messaged her mom and I told her, you know, that. I just know it's on some part that I invited to me and. And, um. This was what she said and I go up, you know, saying, yeah, you know. We watched the years a while, seen some heartstrings on Twitter and it's been a little while since I've been. And, um. After she was calm. Come back on and after again, you know, I thought, you know, maybe one of the things that's picking on her. You know, something like that going on, or maybe she didn't have sleep, you know, something. And, uh, I was pretty shocked when she said that she didn't want to go to school because she was scared of one of the teachers. But I mean, I've heard that before, you know, but not to the point where a kid is vomiting because. Go on, go to school, because they had given that day list that he. I kind of, I'm pretty mad, you know, already. And, um. Because my mom was rushing. Because I was like, you know, I couldn't find my adventure, so I was just like, no, I'm busy. Now, I'm going to get started on it, so. Again, some of them didn't think, people lost their count. Um. They would suddenly go over and tell them what was, you know, what happened, why she never should. And my teacher told her, go to town, and I can't even understand anything. My granddaughter is fighting speech. Probably has been defending the school. And last year we had issues, not go to school because it didn't. Be through. And gorgeous, probably maybe. So. I was pretty surprised when I kind of responded over to. You know, the teacher.
May I ask you a question? Could you talk to the principal?
Yeah, I did.
That was definitely?
Yeah.
We have to be really careful here. I know that. I would like to, you know, follow the next step. The principal, is she investigating or is she looking into the situation?
She, so she was, you know, a conference with Eliana, but, um. A lot of characters are about you and there's been that.
And, and also, um, for you to take action and definitely affirm that I can help you and. And we want to make sure we go up the change and then. Um, we also have to be really careful at a public board meeting that you don't say anything that. Like, you make them that liar heck. The investigation, if it's done by the board, it's done by the H I, who restricts it and also when you. Even usually, if you, if you, if you, you granddaughter or your daughter?
My granddaughter.
Doesn't have to feel. Will you allow me, I know it's your most.
Actually, um, this is what I wrote up on what happened. Is that okay?
Would you be okay if I made you a call later?
Good.
Here today or maybe tomorrow when it's even more time, so I have a meeting listening for you. And. You'll comfortable staying in school.
Yeah. Um.
And you, I want to have disabled the phone or my, my, you know. Promise that I will call you over at home or available at that number, if that's okay?
That's on our day.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Probably call you a little bit longer. Or, you know, find you leaving.
So you don't want to talk about this right here right now?
We have to investigate it now and can't go into the details in a public meeting. Because it's a public forum and it's not like.
And you can get five minutes and we have one more minute.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, no, I mean, I am happy with that. I am happy that it's gonna be looked into. I'm happy that it's been brought to some kind of thing, you know, and I appreciate that.
We're really careful, but then they're not. We can, you know, make sure the review process. But you still have some time if you want to visit some.
Um, no, actually, that is what I was looking for exactly, thank you.
And we all know what you're talking about and I know that, um, I talked to a couple of them, I live in.
Yeah, and I am somewhat on my way to creating a little investigation.
Uh, this is the first time I'm hearing of it on, so I'd like to be informed also about what's going on.
After I visit tomorrow, when I call you, I'll visit with you.
And if you want to be more informed as school board members, like you can definitely just outside of the meeting, because. Uh, it's in rights for the public meeting settings. I also want you to feel like you're not being heard by.
Yeah, no, understandable, you know, I, I completely understand that part of it, so.
Because every time you don't do anything with your ministry, you can always come through and see what's happening. You are one of us in ministry.
And when you talk privately, you can contain a whole lot more, because I'm reading about open, you shouldn't say that in public or something like that. Only on people.
Yeah, that's understandable. No problem. Well, thank you for listening today, Kibich.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it, yeah, I appreciate your time, yeah.
Thank you. Chris, become a chocolate.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, have a good day, mom. Thank you, Mr. Kich.
Okay, with that being said, is there any other guests that would like to speak?
No, but I would like to introduce people to.
Okay, let's do that.
Jake's intentions here, you've already, a couple of you have already mentioned, Nicole and Chris has. Jake was working on his, uh, practicum work for his school administration, if you have anything. Putting in some hours, uh, when we have meetings or when we have projects so that he can learn some of the, uh. Roles and duties of the superintendent and what they look like. So, my welcome, yeah. Thank you.
Kibich, well, that's him. With that being said, we are gonna move on to item. Three, summary overview of the agenda, Superintendent Boles.
Kiba Kich, in New Jersey. After our allotted time, which is business or public comments or, um, visitors. We will review the latest reports from the business manager. After that, we will take a look at the consent agenda. Which includes approving the minutes from the August fifteenth and September seventh board meetings. Followed by approving the creation of four full-time students to work professional positions for the school year. The board will then be asked to approve two resignation requests, followed by the approval of additions to the pub list. Next, the board, originally, we're going to be asked to approve the hire of nine new staff members. But now that has changed, we are taking off items K and M. So it will be the, the hire of seven new staff members. The people listed under K and M are chosen not to accept the offer. So, since we published board book, so. So we'll have seven new staff members whose hire will be brought up to meet today in the consent agenda. We will then close out this consent agenda with approval of the school year twenty-four American Indian Education Aid Application. Followed by a request for each one's burden. There is no need for a closed session at this board meeting. The board will then move into the action items on the agenda. We have three action items. First one is approving the list of bills and wires in the amount of two million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Followed by certifying the proposed twenty-three pay twenty-four property tax levy at maximum. And then we will wrap up our action agenda with action on the termination of employment with employee twenty-twenty-three D. Effective September twenty-first, including today. And as we move on to that item, we have to be very careful that we do not mention any names. This again is an individual and in most cases, who has not been shown that board. Um, if you don't want to, we have to terminate the position so we can find someone to fill the position. We will then move into miscellaneous and then adjourn on.
Kibich, Kibich, um.
Hey, Phil, what's going on here? Speaking about not showing them the way to this stuff, do we have any, you know, there are correspondence from the board members?
Well, as far as my investigation, after three missed meetings, unexcused, we can leave the whole from the school board. So if you're just annoyed, if you missed three meetings of this regular school schedule school meeting and you don't call any of us. And then we have the right to the meeting. Thank you for that, Chris. Anything else?
I believe there are two, that were, that. One of them had a conflict and changed the date and restricted the date. And the other one, um, was not fitting the law.
So do we require doctors' excuse for that? Is that in that policy?
Certainly. We work in the time of that.
Yeah, are these three absences consecutive or are they yearly or what?
During the term?
For, for you term? Three, three in a row, three second.
Oh.
We are together. You did pretty much after this, we have really missed three meetings and you didn't call anyone and let us know. And we, we know that rate.
That been linked or is that like in a state?
In a state. Kibich, for bringing that up, Chris. Okay, with that being said, um. Should we raise up five to show our video?
Sure, why not?
Yeah. Should we go ahead and move forward with number four? Approval of the agenda for September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll move to approve.
Kibich, Chris, do we have a second?
Thirty.
Kibich, um. Is there any comments? Discussion about the agenda? I did have some questions, but Tim addressed those prior to the meeting regarding the agenda, so. That, um, with that being said, can we take a vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, so you have four. Kibich, item five, public comments and delegation.
Hey, anyone want to show the video?
Yeah.
Um, Nicole and I were at the latest conference. And we had been asked to prepare a video highlighting some of the work that we're doing. And the video was called, or they named it Basis of Impact Aid. And I introduced the video down in D C at the conference and I shared that. Impact Aid, which is thirty percent of our budget, roughly twenty million dollars, allows us to do many things. Many programs, and without those programs and without those dollars, we couldn't do nearly as what, anything we are hoping to do from year to year. And we have had a lot of obstacles thrown our way over the years. You want to go all the way back to colonization, some of those tragic issues, to the school shooting tragedy, to dealing with COVID. And now, fast forwarding to this year and last year, finding that. Students are really struggling. They're behind academically everywhere across our country. Students are struggling with social, emotional concerns, mental health concerns. So we shared what we're trying to do in Red Lake to remedy and to support the work. That we're doing with kids in Red Lake, so. At this point, I'm going to share the screen and, um.
This is shared at general session, so everyone I named is viewed this video. And then we email this to the representatives that we, so they all have this in mind.
And actually. I'm going to stop sharing for a second. Start over because there's a window here. Okay, we got it. And hopefully this plays. About a glitch. Welcome to Red Lake School District, Minnesota's only school district. Okay, I'm gonna back up a little bit, make sure our sound. Sound is up. Don't want to blow anybody away, hopefully that won't be too loud. Let's try it again. You'll see some of my lovely drone footage here. Welcome to Red Lake School District, Minnesota's only school district located entirely in a sovereign nation within a sovereign nation. I S D thirty-eight serves the families and stu- live in the communities that comprise Red Lake Nation. Each school boasts a beautiful facility that serves students with caring adults. Who put the needs of every student at the forefront of their duties. On the beautiful shores of Red Lake resides Red Lake Secondary Complex, the home of the warriors. The secondary complex, which houses both the middle school and the high school, serves students in grades six through twelve. About a mile down the road lies Red Lake Elementary Complex. This beautiful and state-of-the-art facility serves students in pre-kindergarten through fifth grade. Further up the road to the northeast is Panima School, situated on the shores of beautiful Red Lake. The Panima School serves students in pre-kindergarten to eighth grade. The mission of Red Lake School District is to cultivate each student's respect for themselves, the culture of the Red Lake Nation. And the global community. To offer progressive academic curriculum in a safe and positive learning environment. And to provide all students with the necessary tools and life skills to achieve their full. to achieve their full potential. This all-encompassing mission has been impeded by recent events that have challenged our community, our country, and our entire world. Like most other school districts, Red Lake has experienced the ravages of a pandemic that has forced students to be sequestered and learn remotely.
These recent events, coupled with a tragedy nearly two decades ago, along with the backdrop of centuries of generational poverty and historic trauma, have created long-lasting impediments to the district's mission of cultivating respect for self and for Anishinaabe language and culture.
Sadly, this has resulted in increases in suicidal ideation, community violence, and local violence spilling into our schools.
These conditions have made school officials realize that academic goals must take a backseat to more important goals, meeting the physical safety, mental health, and social emotional needs of every student in the district. Red Lake School District is shifting its emphasis to embedding Ojibwe language and culture into all aspects of the school and working towards the goals of healing, creating community, and providing more social emotional supports for students in order to make learning relevant and meaningful. By instilling native ways and teaching state standards through Anishinaabe language and culture, the school district is creating community, providing a sense of safety, and engendering pride in the culture of the people. Restorative practices are a priority throughout the school district. Positive behavioral interventions and supports is now an important part of the district with an emphasis on the grandfather teachings. Programs such as the district's new student peer leadership program help to build relationships and connections in school and teach respect for self and an understanding that help is available to keep students connected and engaged.
We are committed to remaining on the good path and helping our students lift each other up and find value in each other, in themselves, and in their strong Anishinaabe language and culture.
Red Lake School District is a place where each child is valued, where lifelong learning is embraced, and students are empowered to become Red Lake Nation ambassadors in the global community. Because when the children thrive, the nation thrives.
That was awesome, you speak all those people's songs.
You got Morgan Freeman, Little Mermaid skills.
It's because I talk slowly.
Meekrich, that was wonderful, and, and all of that was sent to the, um, the houses that we wanted to visit, the offices that we visited. And so hopefully that will give the, you know, people to sign all the names and support. Meekrich for that. So I know that this will be put on the district website, I think next week or the community.
YouTube as well?
Yep.
Okay, we are still on number five, public comments, delegations. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Yeah.
Are we? Okay, we're going to move on to item six, reports, Gichi Okama, DeBajamo, and superintendent report.
Sheena Rich, in New Orleans, I shared my report with you over the weekend, but I will reiterate that we're, uh, we're off to a good start. The principal had a meeting yesterday morning, and I couldn't be there because I was still coming back from Washington DC, but the, uh, general consensus is that this year is starting out much better than last year. We still have our issues, you know, we always will, but it's calmer and quieter, and we think that one of the reasons is that we're putting self over the.
Yep, I was going to say, can you speak on that? You know, school member reported and they weren't aware that we are, you know, I don't know which board member it was, but yeah, speak a little bit on the colleges.
If you remember, I showed you a video last May about how they work and that we do pilot with the middle school. And I passed them out last month to all of you to try to look at them and open them up. But, um, what's new this year, we're doing is not only with our middle school, but with ninth and twelfth graders. Ninth grader, however, you get it last year, pilot as eighth graders. And, um, there's, most kids are being very cooperative. We did hear that this week, some of them are trying to challenge us a little bit. They'll bring in a burner phone or pay phone and say, okay, I need your phone and put it in the pouch, close the pouch, and then they have their other phones still with them. So today, we visited seventeen classes, security personnel did with wands, and found a few more cell phones, a few more, um, earbuds, and, and, and those are okay to have, but we still found them, quite a few things. So that was a good lesson to all of us that we need to do that from time to time to hold people accountable, because I try to get around. Now, when we had the scare this weekend, you know, I've heard of, we're one of preschool districts that had to deal with a scare of some sort that was caused by an eleven or twelve year old. This week in the news. Metro School canceled school today because of threats made by an eleven-year-old. They don't have a plan. That was deemed to be a viable threat, so they canceled the school. Our situation is with a student on a Friday evening who made a comment about, with a gang sign in the picture and said, they don't want to show up at school on Monday. Unfortunately, that got posted and then it got reposted many times. But it ultimately, rather than simply calling in school and asking if we do want to, if you are on top of it, which we were. And investigators went to the house, determined that this, we had no friends. And was just making idle threats because he was being, feeling unsafe at school. Um, we're addressing those concerns. But I had a couple of parents call and say, can we take our phones out on Monday? Will you, please use your phones on Monday? And my response to that was, and will continue to be, first of all, how is a phone going to protect you when you're a student? I can't zap you with my phone, I can't shield myself with my phone. And if you remember, two thousand five, the tragedy, people using their phones nineteen years ago, fewer phones, blew up the dollar, shut the cell phone down. And now even law enforcement can't even use their phones, couldn't. So all of law enforcement personnel say, the last thing you want to do is give access and use your phones to new places. Secondly, if you truly do have a lockdown, again, the last thing you want is kids going, you know, calling each other or getting calls from parents, and those phone calls, those phones ringing, with kids are in a lockdown. And the perpetrator, the recruiter, they hear the phone ringing, they figure, okay, there's someone behind this locked door, and they start moving. You can't have that. So of all the times to not have a phone, it's when there's an emergency like that. We have law enforcement taking care of things, and parents want to reach a student and find out, I'm going to come pick you up. They won't be allowed to do that. There will be a perimeter around it. Half the time, we may have already moved students to a safer location. I was talking to a couple of other superintendents about our cell phone use, and they all said, gosh, that would be nice to have. We've been talking about that ourselves. And one superintendent was dealing with follow-up from a video that occurred just last week, he's giving me over. And I turned on my phone and called him, said, you know what? That video wouldn't have been posted if you didn't have this on. And all that video served to do was to inflame the whole situation. I'm hoping that we can continue to educate our community, our parents, and families and kids that when you're in school, the best thing to do is to be present. You leave your phone in your pocket, in your pouch, and let's move. Anyway, getting back to, I think another good reason, reason we're getting off to better years, we have more student support personnel. And as you saw and heard in my summary, we're asking for you to approve, if we have the funding, for us to hire four more. They're going to use those support kids. And we're starting off the year with EBIS, Positive Video and Student Support. And we're working on being more positive and encouraging students to behave and to recognize and acknowledge good behavior, focus more on, um, good stuff for the year, except for achieving this.
Meekrich for that. And also, we got our new scoreboard up at the football field. Really nice, and then the concessions stand is now running, running up and down for our guests and community members. I, I seen Tom and his family using the concessions stand last week at the football game, and that's never been available for us, so Meekrich, everybody working together, doing things that.
Lots to celebrate, and I want to make sure you know that before the next board meeting, our homecoming game, we have invited the family, Olson family, Tom and Meredith Olson, they're the ones who donated fifteen thousand dollars towards the purchase of that new scoreboard. So we're going to, they've been invited, and they're going to come up here and watch a homecoming volleyball game and a homecoming football game, and we're going to dedicate the scoreboard at that time. And, um, we'll probably have a little reception, the football players can meet the family, and we'll probably get some snacks. After, somewhere around five o'clock, eight, twelve thirty, twenty o'clock, and I will invite you to drop by and.
You can just play under the lights.
Yep. Thank the Olson family. This is running the scoreboard, right? Pretty easy to run, or is it pretty, uh?
No, it's, it's pretty. Yeah, yeah, one time I just got, there was a little glitch there, we were lost connection. So, nobody.
Start the clock.
Good, I, I couldn't do that.
You did a ten-yard penalty in the other direction, they, closer to the line.
No, but it, it was good, you know, because for the last, uh, when we talked with the refs too, we like, because we used to, once that hole went out, we'd be on that, you know? People, let's score.
Kind of embarrassing when another kid comes to a home game and we can't tell them, come on.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of positive comments on the, you know, we used to play with a lot of, you know, grass, so it's hardly in the grass, you know, and it was, it was a lot of the ball down there, you know?
The last one?
Yeah, a lot of the positive stuff, and more kids are coming out now, you know?
Yeah.
We had thirty-five.
Last year, this time, I think we had one big team, big team trouble, not teams, but it was great.
Yep, good news. And all the kids have to keep a C average to stay on that team. We're preparing them to become, you know, um, ready for college, need college, after college. Meekrich, anything else at the school board members? We're going to move on to item six, the Junior Gichi Okama, DeBajamo.
Meekrich, Chair, Pijarle, Willie's report, um, it's standard and routine, and basically it's not the checks and wires, but just updates on what we have in our different accounts. And, um, I had a chance to look it over, there's a lot there to look at, Willie always, uh, gives me information over the course of a month, and everything is in order, so I submit this to you, um, for your approval. Actually, it's something that needs to be approved until the report.
Yeah, on that, I asked, um, Willie, I found out that there's, um, climate change grants available, that maybe will help with our heat season situation, so I asked Willie to.
To look into that?
Yeah. So.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be great, so again, you know, now the tree, there's maybe two or three spots.
Yep, I was there today, and it's warm again, and some of them are spot.
Yeah, yeah, and certain spots, and I actually went there because in, in, in Cape Town, it's, no, you don't feel it. And you got the airport, but you get on the boat, you look in all that area, and then you get to the living room, and it's all, you know, it's just, when your kindergarten has started.
Yep, because they're there.
Yeah.
More H3s, some needs are upgraded.
So again, I hope we can find some, you know, uh.
Meekrich, anything else, board members? Okay, we're going to move on to item seven, consent agenda for September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Did we, we already removed those two?
Yep, and we approached that, we're moving K and, uh, M.
We just reposted it on all of them, or?
Yep. We'll have them next, forty, forty.
I'll move to the, I've amended.
Meekrich, Chris?
Second.
Meekrich, um. Any further comments?
I really liked that, uh, oh. Really like read that. The game's fun, so.
Isn't that nice? Okay, with that being said, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Right.
Zero gents. We're moving on to item eight, post session if necessary, and I don't, do you think so today, Tim?
Don't know. Nothing to present to you.
So on that investigation, I'll start with that, will I circle out it in the back here?
Um, if there's a positive reason to take action, it's well.
Hey, Meekrich, we're moving on to item nine, action items. Approve bills and wires for the month of August, two thousand twenty-three. We have a motion to approve.
Can't do it out of the line on this issue.
I don't. Action item nine, do we have a motion to approve?
Is somebody available to elaborate on this?
On?
Um, item nine A.
Is there a specific question or? Anything with the bills?
Nothing specific, just, uh, some type of overview?
Yeah, we, uh, every now and then, you know, if there's, if there's a specific question, we bring that up, but, um, again, with, when Willie presents this, it's just the, basically the checks, the bills, and the wires for payroll, for utilities, for equipment, curriculum purchase, and there's nothing in there that's specifically out of range or, um, that raised a question, and, uh, every now and then, I'll, I know that, uh, the board members sometimes might say, what, what is this for, you know, and a lot of times, I might be able to answer that question, other times I won't be able to, and I'll have to go to Willie to get the answers back to you, but. Um.
The treasurer's not here today.
Right. But that's, the position of the treasurer is mostly formal, formality. He's the business manager who conducts the business. And conducts the business under the eyes of the auditorium. In fact, the audit is going on right now in the street, it's past here, so. But I can tell you that everything on this list is normal and routine with a reason. And two point, two million two hundred and sixty-two thousand is actually on the lower end of the league. Usually it's around two and a half, two point eight, and one point nine. One of the reasons for that is many of our projects in the summer are done. So in the summer, we get closer and closer to the peanut. So I would just submit this to you and a typical relatively small bill, forty-one, everything is in order. If you had a specific item, you know, it's been brilliant. If there's nothing that's super large or concerning or, uh, of no channel, there's some bills.
Can you check and see if, um, the house has any electric? The number, you know, on a previous term, we went with the installation of a lot of different lights and, motion detectors in the hopes, the hope was bringing it down.
Bringing it down, yeah.
Yeah, because it was, I think it was like forty thousand, I don't know.
I can get a report from Willie in the next board meeting and compare the average or the annual usage to previous year before we were done.
I know something we consider is those solar lights. You know, like, we're getting streetlights put on the reservation that are solar operated.
You know, these aren't good, are they?
They're, we pay to like them, but we did order some that are gonna go at city junctions, you know. That are gonna be solar operated, so that would be pretty soon.
You know, we're starting to lose though is, uh, stargazing. I'm losing my stargazing even where I live, out west, the light pollution. Getting higher, even to the south, like where they put the, see, like by Pete's place there, where all those ones went up, it's all operator down to the south, so. It's good.
Okay, action item nine, approve bills and wires for the month of August, two thousand three, twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve? Is there any questions or comments on why we're not moving forward with action item nine?
Man, Chair, I want to approve.
Need Rich for that, Chris. Do we have a second?
A second.
Need Rich, Tom. Any comments or concerns regarding nine? We'll take about all those in favor. Do you say aye?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain? Three, three, four, and one abstain. That still passes, right? We're gonna move on to action nine B.
Okay, this is where usually at this time of year, usually August or September, we certify the property tax levy at a certain level. And most districts certify it at maximum, at maximum, because then when we get to the truth and taxation meeting in December, we were officially exempt certification. If it's at maximum, in August or September, we can continue at maximum in December. Or if we want to, we can back off a little bit in December. But if you don't start out at maximum and you started a lower number, you can't increase it when you get to December. So what we're basically doing here is setting the overall levy, the local funds. And unlike any other district that I've worked in, unlike most districts in Minnesota or anywhere else in Minnesota, we don't have a whole lot to look at because we have just a couple of taxpaying entities or home teams in this community. Which is why we get so much from impact aid and from other financial sources. So basically what we're doing is we're just setting the levy. And one thing I can point out is if you want to, you can look at the board book, the page, and the list on, in your board book of this levy. But you don't have to follow along, I can explain it to you. It goes into market value of our property, so our overall property market value. In two thousand eighteen, with eight hundred thirty thousand, six hundred dollars. In twenty twenty-two, it's over a million dollars. What often happens in communities, market value goes up. That results in an increase in taxes and levies. Not so much true here, because we're getting just a couple of taxpayers. And you don't even know who they are, because they're individual homes or properties. And then we often look at our residential ABM, or adjusted daily membership. We have roughly an enrollment of around sixteen hundred students. But the adjusted daily membership in the Formula eleven is different from that sixteen hundred. And when we look at our twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, adjusted daily membership is close to two thousand. Because we increase the amount of a student's membership. The high school students are often worth more than one, you know. So our adjusted daily membership for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is nineteen seventy-three. One thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three. But what we will do when we get to our December truth and taxation meeting, and that's where Willie will come in and he'll start talking about what our levy really is. That's when we will have to decide and put into stone what the official levy will be at that time. But for now, he has asked, his recommendation, my recommendation, that we simply approve. We certify the proposed property tax levy, it's offset number of at maximum. And then we get into it and you send them and you find out. So I submit that to you verbally.
Need Rich, Need Rich for your explanation. Do we have a motion to approve, school members?
A motion.
Need Rich, Tom. Do you have a second?
A second.
Need Rich, Chris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, four and four, zero gents. We're gonna move on to item nine C, approved termination of employment with employee two thousand twenty-three dash E. Effective September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve?
And again, being careful that we don't mention names, this individual and substandard work performance and conduct, including but not limited to job abandonment. So we need to make sure there is someone there who will cover your job, so.
Yeah, and it is listed back here.
Our motion.
Need Rich, Tom, do we have a second? Need Rich, Chris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero gents. Ten miscellaneous, do we have any miscellaneous today?
I have something.
Go ahead, Chris.
The, I invited Chris Borgo yesterday to, to the club, Russia, and I don't know if he's and we, I feel we need to come up with some type of plan regarding safety, you know, making them safer. And it's quite the, it's quite the mess, I don't know if anybody's been back there and seen it, but it's you know, I, Grantson and I were there the other day and a car came and luckily I caught it, I don't know, you know. They didn't see me until they got really close and just turned on the
In the parking area, not in the
No, on that little, uh,
Drop off.
Drop off, yeah.
Pick up at the end, pick up, pick up. Drop off seems to be more than right.
No, it's not, because they park there, they should be parking and then walking in.
No, drop off. The mornings seem okay, but
Well, in the mornings, they park there in a, in a way, and they, you know, where you gotta keep the line going, jump, pack the room, keep going.
Well, yeah, so that, that is the issue, that little, if, if every, and I think if everybody would go park and walk into the school, the drop off or pick up, we would eliminate that. No, right now, it's just kind of a free throw. And it's super dangerous, it's time to be super fast, and everybody's in a hurry.
Maybe we should direct security people out there and monitor for the timing.
My, my thought on that though was, was, you know, that's kind of big too. I don't know, between forces, my, my thoughts, we are in trouble. Or if you remember here and last year, I don't know if you're still doing it, but, but the, the security vehicle and guards would pull up and block off. And we would like buses, and, no, we, we wouldn't have to do that back there, because buses aren't real area. So if we maybe parked, uh, you just, you have a guard over there in the morning, and during that time, and if you're and say, hey, you guys, you know, there's an ample parking spot, but there's two lanes on each curve. And then there's a third lane of traffic. So it's super, super, it's a mess, you know, and
I know, you should get some information off the families.
So that was, Borgo's idea was maybe, um, um, in the media, there's like some type of letter going out
Remind them.
To the parents, so you said there's a coordination thing, so maybe we can block it all online. You know, and then let students, you know, we don't want to wait till something happens and we're gone, you know. And it seemed like the easy thing. Like I said, what they did here, it helped that everybody went into parking lots.
Maybe the best thing was to create a different traffic flow by having an SRO over there or something.
Maybe SRO might, you know what I mean, because when they see our guards, I mean, they're reactive, and then they see us.
Right.
Because we've got signage, you know, but, you know, we could spend more money and time, but I know we're having a copy of one, so I don't mean they're gonna listen to them, you know, I mean, we could, but all this time, we don't have people. Because even the one right now sitting people, they'll, they'll go
They'll turn around and come back the one that says, go to sleep. Like, hey, I can't drive that way.
And I'm
They can't drive around.
And I'm getting passed on the, when you go around the back there, people passing me up, because there's
Yeah.
If you go off the highway, off the road, off the little street there, there's a dirt, that's where we're getting passed. And people passing, right, wearing speed bombs, getting passed, you know.
Glad you brought that up, because I don't know what's changed, but I've been, but I'll talk to both Chris and John Brown about checking that out.
Yeah, no, there was, I mean, they do it here, but I'm talking about
Yeah, right, right.
That's very, you know, I don't know what it looks like here, because I don't, I don't agree anymore.
No, just talk to, you know, to Jake about that, about traffic flow and we need to, you know, keep an eye on that. So we realize what's happening that way, so we'll remedy that.
Yeah, sooner or later, sooner or later. Oh, and then I have the, I don't know, before I shared, I shared a video, well, from, you know, past, I have to do it for the members.
Oh, yeah. This is something that we could look at in the future, and so I'm sharing, I'm telling. And so that's something that we could discuss after we have been here and possibly add it into our next revenue meeting. And it's something that I highly support and hire for all the other people. You know, we can help out the best way, especially if we can recruit teachers, recruit the best teachers. We definitely support that.
Yep. And actually, I was talking to a couple of the members of that board meeting. And I said, this is a good time to bring it up, because we're in negotiation right now, because we put it in. And that's what I've been saying since I've been here, we need to make sure
Not signed up by anybody, you know, who turned this in?
Becky Nethan.
Yeah.
Oh, she didn't sign it, though.
But we can discuss that and whether it's a, um, better himself, the degree in medicine, medicine? I would love to see more coming back as teachers.
Teachers, this is what we're supporting here. We're working here, we want you to come back as teachers.
Do we gotta take this to the policy board before it becomes an impressive school?
Negotiation.
We would actually probably, let's see what happens with negotiations in, in the master agreement. If it doesn't even have the new policy, part of the agreement. If it, um, districts do it differently, sometimes they don't do it in an agreement, they do it in a policy. Others do the agreement, sometimes, um, the culture of the district. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we were, we were, both of us were in cheer out of, you know, like, the property avenues.
Need Rich, are you guys coming together? And do you have a call or is something there in town that we need to address?
And I can thank Jake, who took the time while he's listening, you know, I mean, here, to book up that monthly bill for last month, August, thirty thousand, per bell kind of record, thirty thousand, uh, thirty thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. So that was one month, you know, so. Now we can look back and, you know, what is it for a year, and how does that compare to before? So there's the movers. Or we can take a look at the month of August, a few years ago, before we set up the newer light systems. Um, automatic lights, which are not, you know, so.
And possibly replacing with solar lights.
Yep, yeah.
Need Rich for that.
The way, speaking of solar, the way, we're really trying to push solar, but it, it didn't make it happen. This level solar, is there any, you remember what happened, Jack? Was there more?
That was with Bob Blake?
Yeah, was there, the, the
Maybe, maybe no follow-up on
Really high voltage program now, too, and the ground is, you can even look at solar.
Bob Blake's still in business.
Okay.
That's been doing quite a deal of work.
Yeah, it's working everywhere else, but for some reason, we couldn't get this part here to go ahead and
Or died at the board table?
Yeah, there's questions about his, his cut.
Oh, yeah, it was something about like, uh, they would reap the profits for ten years or something, then they would all come back to Red Lake after that. And I think that was a question about it, kind of scared everyone away.
I'm sorry, did you see all that? See where we left on?
Solar bear.
It is solar bear?
Solar bears, yeah.
They were involved, but I'm in the back of the table.
Yeah, because they were willing, they were gonna outfit the schools, you know, pretty much, it was gonna be our starting point, and we just couldn't, we couldn't get this part.
Oh, I really believe in solar, I don't think it has to help.
And you drive up here?
Yeah.
And we're talking about bringing back silverware and green dishes instead of doing paper?
Doing more.
I see that we're buying, uh, my mom and me, we're buying food for But I sent their picture, the tomato, but there's a difference with the tomatoes. She said, yeah, they're distressed, you know, I mean, I could, I could taste the nutrients. So it's good, it's good, um, now we still have some food, I don't know.
Yeah, it's more sustainable, never did.
Yeah, never bought.
I was talking to Beards and, and, um, getting buying a little bit of Omnicorn, he said, the kids like it and everything, so.
I liked the, how many you got in a while back?
I'll have to, uh, check with him once and he wants more.
Thank you.
Rich.
There was that question of waste, though. They weren't gonna do it, they weren't gonna be eating it, it's gonna be going away like they're eating so much other food.
Yep, so of course, if there's nothing to take, if they want it, you can eat it.
Yeah.
A lot of veggies.
Yeah. Hard to see.
And so, and so I, I told kids about how we're the mission school, and I And so, and so, I tell kids about how I was at the mission school, and I went, you could even, you could get recess if you didn't do that.
And I tell kids, that, that fruit or that vegetable worked hard. Those go away. There's a lot of work that goes into it.
Always, you know, there, there's some people show up with like, huh, chewy.
I know.
You know, like, with China, or just sugar, you know, all of these.
Fine.
Is that, um, is that, that's, is that policy even, or?
Can't really, you know, we can say you can't bring it into the lunchroom, but then we can hurt their social, you know, like, I know.
Oh, yeah, they get their, they get all their friends banned.
Yeah. We just, we just can't serve it ourselves, you know.
Oh, okay.
And we encourage them that too, and whenever I see kids eating food, or whatever else, they say, Tom, you're not a good kid. One young guy, he was a sophomore, I think, last year, he was junior, um, he sits at the table and doesn't even think, how to think? And I kept fucking him, I said, Nolan, how did you do? And this year he did, I don't know what you... Sure, wasn't even going, but he's eating, and I do the same.
And I'm still concerned since I'm a toddler, because they want a sugar.
Yeah.
It's about social background. And then we want to keep this, to punish the kid if they can't sit. And listed in lanes, but we do sugar monthly.
I'm gonna talk to our, uh, consultant on nutrition, okay?
Because the, the answer before was, well, it's in the guideline, you know, and, you know.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, yeah. What do I want her to do?
Okay, before we adjourn, I'd like to share one more thing on the miscellaneous. The relic where football program has been invited by your NFL and Vikings to attend the Vikings game on Sunday.
Go up.
We're so excited. So the boys will be leaving Saturday, and the coaches, and maybe sit back, we're bench, there's more news to come, so we'll wait to share the rest of that.
And you're all wearing red that year?
We're all wearing red, they, they require for us to wear a red, like, wear gear.
And I asked Nolan, help him remember protection, so I can know where you're sitting, so I can watch you there.
Yep, exactly, so I'm more than likely, they're gonna get on the jumbo train.
Yep.
And all of this is stemming from the Star Tribune article, and hold on, Needwich. Okay, with that being said, is there anything else to add to miscellaneous? Okay, we're gonna move on to item eleven, adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion.
Needwich, Tom, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, wait now, um, I'm gonna make a comment before we go on, if, I just wanted to remind the school board that we are youth advocates. And it's very important that we are active board members. I wanna make that note here. Needwich, the meeting is adjourned at three oh four, three oh five.
Needwich, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, it was really interesting at NAPAS, and that's a lot of hardware, so we should start looking.